Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, May the 2nd, 2022 work session. We will say welcome to our viewing audience joining us live stream. And I would ask, I'll first call the meeting to order and ask that all that are here to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, we will begin with 3.01, setting the agenda. May I have a motion that the agenda be adopted as presented?
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we will move to 4.01, Board Chair Superintendent and Attorney comments. And the only thing that I want to mention is that we want to remind the viewing audience, we've been asked to say this at meetings so that everyone kind of understands our calendar. Our business meeting follows our work session. We have the first Monday of the month is normally our work session and the second Monday of the month is our business meeting. So next Monday, the 9th, we will have our business meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kapiki for superintendent comments. You are good at this time? Okay, great. Mr. White, anything from our attorney comments?
I'm good right now. I'm good right now. I know that later in the meeting, we're going to talk about the policies, so we're good.
Yes, great, thank you. Same. Okay. I will move to 5.01, Committee Reports, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
I need to pull the mic a little closer to me so that folks can hear me. Just wanted to remind folks that the Schools and Community Engagement Committee, the application is up online on our school website. I believe it may be on individual school websites as well. We are still taking applications until the 6th of this month. We will, our first meeting will be on May 26th, so I just wanted to put that reminder out there.
Thank you. Board members, any other reports for tonight? Is it other than, do you want to?
Of the application.
Sure.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the application for the Board of Education Student Intern Program is now available and will be available for the next few weeks. And that is also onsite. If you go to our website, go under BOE and Board Student Intern Program, you can see that application.
Thank you. We will move to 6.01, which are our Items for Consent or Action at the May 9th, 2022 Business Meeting. I'm going to begin with 6.01, which reads Policies 3200, 3200R, 3210, and 3210AG, which means Administrative Guidelines. So there, these policies are going to be actually placed with Ms. Blackwell's committee on, at her first meeting, which she will cover very shortly this coming Wednesday, in an effort for us to be proactive in some issues that have taken place in the last couple of weeks regarding books, curriculum, lots of discussions that's taken place within the community. This is really why this committee was created. And we just can't seem to quite get that committee off the ground quick enough to get some of these issues taken a look at or reviewed, if you will. But I will let Ms. Blackwell speak to that, but first, I'm also going to let Dr. Kapiki speak to it as well.
So I think we're going to talk a little bit later about some of the policies on the agenda, but before I do that, I wanted to say that I want to commend Keisha Sandage for leading the School Community Engagement Committee. I know that she's very passionate about leading that committee. I know that she had some really great ideas and things to discuss with our community. And I want to emphasize the word "community" there because that is where this board wants to take a lot of the, I'm not going to call them issues, and they may not be issues, but a lot of the subject matter, subject material, things that are in debate in the community and things that are in debate in the schools. One thing that the board has really tried hard to do is to kind of bring groups together, to have open, honest discussions. You hear the word transparent, I'm going to call it open, honest discussions because I think that's what needs to take place in our community. You have a very active, passionate community that's very involved in the Cabarrus County Schools, which is excellent, which is what we want. We want people involved, we want people engaged. So Mrs. Sandage has her committee up and running, that's wonderful. And Laura Blackwell is leading the Literature Review Committee, which is wonderful. These committees are not intended to be contentious, threatening, or have any preconceived agendas or things decided before they get in there. One of the things I constantly hear from the board is that they want to engage the public in discussion about what they think and what they see and what they hear and what's going on in their schools. I think as administrators and as your superintendent, one thing I would like to continue to see is that open dialogue. So recently, we've had some discussion on some things that are taking place in our classrooms, and our teachers are doing a great job. And I want to say first and foremost, thank you to all our educators out there. You're doing wonderful work and we appreciate it immensely. I think we would all agree that they are, these are trying times, for lack of a better way of saying it, where there's a lot of discussion, debate on different things in terms of what we believe should be or shouldn't be in schools. But that debate's healthy and welcomed and wanted. And I want to again commend our teachers because I think the things that they are doing in our classrooms are, they're going to love and beyond, and it's a very difficult time to be a teacher. As you know, many of our teachers are leaving the profession, and we want to encourage them to stay in the profession and to engage in conversation with us as we continue to make the Cabarrus County School System the best in the nation. That is the goal. We want to be the best in the nation, we want to be the example for all of us to follow. So in saying that, one of the things I think that's beholden to us and something that we should do, and I would like to introduce this evening, I hear a lot about curriculum. I hear a lot about things that are in classrooms, I hear a lot about things that have been approved, and sometimes it's just that miscommunication that seems to get lost in the weeds. So one of the things I'm going to introduce this evening to the board is that I'm proposing starting in June that we have a Parent Curriculum Review Committee that really basically meet once a month and we start to talk about the curriculum that's in our schools. And we present that in this room to anyone that would like to show up and be here, and we will share what we're doing from K to 12 in the classrooms. And then any issues that come out of that committee that would like to make recommendations to the board for any type of changes that align with their policy, I would encourage that to occur and happen. I believe this forum will give all of us an open, a chance to have open dialogue about what's going on in our schools. And it's meant to welcome all. Now clearly, we can't have everybody speaking and have any, have, you know, hundreds of people speaking at the meetings, but we can, it would be run like a regular meeting where people can voice their opinions. We'd have an agenda, people know what it's about, and we can talk about all the things that are in our schools. But it will also give us a chance to, I hear the word "trust" tossed around a lot. So I think it gives us a chance to open up those lanes of conversation to continue to establish that trust with our community, both with what's taking place in the schools, from an administrative standpoint, from a teacher standpoint, from a parent standpoint, from a child's standpoint, so that we're having discussion about what we're doing in schools. At the end of the day, it's a community system, right? We send our kids to this school system, we want the best for our kids. We all agree on that. We want the best education for our children. So I think it's important that we have that discussion as to what does that look like as we move forward. So I'm proposing that to the board this evening, and I will share more details next week at our business meeting and announce the origination, the first date of that particular committee. And again, I think that the things that Keisha Sandage and Laura Blackwell are doing with their committees is going to help us, and hopefully we can blend some of that conversation into this committee. But our attempt and our point and the purpose is to open up dialogue with our community and to be open and honest and say, this is what's going on. Not to say that we're right all the time, because frankly, we don't have all the answers and we're not always right. And sometimes we get it wrong. So I think it's important to make sure we acknowledge that as well. But I do believe that as educators, and one thing I have said to everyone that I've crossed about Cabarrus County Schools is that people are genuine and they care. And that says a lot. And they care deeply and passionately about making sure that our children get a first-class education. And that's the end goal, and we want to be the best in the nation. And I think when you're having open dialogue and communicating with your committee, excuse me, with your community, that you can only improve and go forward in a better way because we're all then on the same page as we move forward with that conversation. So again, I'll share more with that. I would like to thank the entire board, as I mentioned, Mrs. Sandage and Mrs. Blackwell with their committees, I really appreciate that. But I also want to commend Mr. Walter, Mr. Fur, Chairman Grimsley, Mrs. Carpenter, Mrs. Adcock, because it's the discussion that I've heard over the last nine months and their passion to make sure that we deliver the best education for our children in this community. And they're adamant about listening to the community, making sure the community is heard. If I've been given any directive, it's from the board, that is one that's been sound. Make sure that we pay attention to the community's desires. Again, doesn't always mean that we're going to have a total agreement, but at least we're honoring and hearing what they have to say so we can do it, so that we can make sure that we're getting it right as we move forward. So I think we engage. I think we engage in that conversation with teachers, with administrators, with parents, with business leaders, and we do that through an open and honest dialogue by having a Parent Curriculum Review Committee. Then there's no surprises, nobody says, well, I didn't know. We say, no, here it is. Here's the agenda, here's the curriculum, here's what we do on a daily basis, this is what this class looks like, this is what the scope and sequence looks like, these are what the standards are of the state, these are the requirements, this is what the law says, this is what our policy says. And if there is any disagreement, we can bring that disagreement to the board, who ultimately makes the decisions according to our policy. So I appreciate the time to share that with you, and that is our intention moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, you know, I just want to make a statement that sometimes it's really difficult. I know people get really frustrated when, you know, you make a phone call to a board member or you send an email and you think you're not being heard, but you are being heard. It's really difficult, the way we operate, because we operate as a legal board, so we only meet twice a month, you know, and to conduct business has to be at a public setting, so we have to have an actual board meeting to do that. It's really hard sometimes to get all the things that we do into one or two meetings when we can leave here on a Monday night and something happens on Tuesday and we can't address that until the following week. So I heard a lot over the weekend in some forums that we were a part of and in some meetings that I was a part of, that people feel like that we're more reactionary than proactive, but it's really hard to conduct business the way we legally have to and to address all the issues that come before us. So when I brought that to the board about these two committees, we got questions about that, you know, why do you have to always do something, why can't you not just respond? But the board has to respond in a legal way, you know, we have to make decisions as a board, not as individual board members. So it's really hard to conduct business and people not understand all the logistics that we have to abide by. So that's what the board chair has to do. We have to create a committee to address some of these issues, you know, make individual board members chairs of those committees so that they're a part of that and that we are addressing those issues. It just takes some time, the way we legally have to respond. So I hope that all will understand that, and I just want to make sure that all board members understand that. And I'm going to open this up for Dr., for discussion with what Dr. Kapiki has stated, if anybody has any questions. Ms. Adcock, I will start with you.
I don't have any questions. I think it's just a comment that I agree with everything that Dr. Kapiki and Chair Grimsley has said about our intentions and being transparent with our community and wanting people to understand and have the ability to question us and ask questions and us to be able to give them the answer, so thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, and I appreciate this opportunity because, as you mentioned, we've been in some forums and been asked a lot of questions. And one thing, I think this probably is the proper time to maybe bring this forward because it's in the same vein that I am asking this. As you're aware, that a couple of the members currently serve on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and I've been on this one roughly, probably between, oh, probably three to four years possibly. Not all the time I've served on this board because we were just put on this committee, you know, right after it, you know, they decided to put some board members on it. But I received an email, and it was basically dated 4/22, and I've never received an email kind of like this with this wording. But it was titled, well, I had a couple of things on it, but it was talking about the Empowered 13 Grant Book Purchase. And some of the wording that was on this, and I think this kind of, and I sent it to John, I sent it to some of the board, yourself, Laura, and since Laura, it's kind of tied in with our committee and a couple of the other board members because some of the wording, we're talking about some of these books that have gotten into our school. And when I saw this, I thought, hmm, maybe this is how these books have kind of slipped through the cracks. And what this email was kind of asking was the CNI Committee to approve these books. And it was kind of not going through the normal procedure. And when I looked at this, it was asking us to approve these books with kind of a paragraph describing these books. And it was saying that these materials were going to be, these books would be available for choice through the school media center or classroom library, and that the materials were not typically, it said, the district does not typically purchase supplemental materials for school, however, additional funds were available for these purposes. It said, please note, these materials are not core instruction resources but supplemental. But what really caught my attention on this email was saying, due to this process, books, books were selected without following our procedure for material selection at the district or school level. Red flag for me, this is why I sent this to you. So I wanted to make sure that y'all were aware of this, and I had, as I mentioned, I've served on this committee and I'd never seen an email like this. And I think because of what our board's been saying and what we've told our superintendent, this is why this was bought, because we are trying to do something. And me personally, I'm not ready to approve these books because I'm not going to approve something with a paragraph about a book. And a couple of those books with a paragraph I wrote, read, I'm not going to do it because I don't know what pictures are in those books, I don't know what other words are in those books, and I will not approve a book that way. But one of the things, I think it's a great idea, again, I don't, I don't think any of us, I can't speak for that, but I know I will not do that. Personally, if we need to tweak policies to make them where we can enforce them, I want to see that. I want to see that we make sure we follow recommendations of our excellent superintendent, of the parents, what we see, and I'm saying, go forward with it. Thank you for allowing me to make my statement.
Thank you. Who is on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee with Carolyn? Denise, okay. And you received that email as well?
I don't remember receiving that email. Am I on there? I'll just have to go back and look at it.
Okay. That is one of the issues that we were trying to address because, like I said, timing is always really an issue. If we've already had a board meeting, it's not that I'm not addressing these issues or these emails, we just have to have a discussion with them, about them, and then with Dr. Kapiki, and then we have to decide if it's going to be an agenda item for the board to discuss as a whole. You know, there's a lot of vetting that goes on, and I know that gets really frustrating with board members and the community. I know it's a frustrating process, but it is what it has to be because of how we legally have to conduct business. And Mr. White, if you would like to speak to that at any point in time, I think that would be great for the viewing audience to hear that as well, because I think as we talk to individuals, they understand that we have, you know, the law that we have to abide by with legal operational meetings.
That is some of the things that Mrs. Blackwell has charged me to talk to the committee about and get the point across as to how we select books, both in the media as well as in the classroom. And then the question is, the selection of those books needs to be based upon the First Amendment rights of the students, but also the Constitution, so we have to be able to address that. And you have different standards when you're looking at books that are placed in the library versus books that are set with, within the curriculum setting. And then in the classroom, you're looking at statewide standards that are looked at as well. So that we, there's a lot that goes into the selection of a book. And in regards to the policies, it's a matter of getting all of the policies to be consistent with one another, to talk about media collection, talk about supplemental, supplemental instruction material, and then instructional materials, instructional materials, district-wide versus instructional materials that is at the school level. So it's trying to get, trying to get all those together, and that's what Mrs. Blackwell has been tasking me to at least get, and I get this, her committee up to speed, but also to chew on how best to enact the visions of the board and bring back something to the board as it relates to the policy. That's the reason why I created or drafted the policy that you have in your board docs. That in no way mean, is a final version. It is something to look at, something to chew on, something to understand better. And also, the committee can tear it apart. You know, that's why I put it out there, is to get them to start thinking about what it is that y'all want, but also, at the end of the day, make certain it follows the educational values of Cabarrus County School System and our community.
And I think it's really important to note that processes need to align
Yes.
with policy, because I think that's where we're finding that that's a lot of issue with, you know, it was approved three or four years ago, or prior administration, or prior groups, or committees, or whatever that is. And I think different schools doing different things as well has kind of skewed some of that process as well. So I think making sure that these processes align with the policies, which really is the only thing that we actually can act off of, is most important.
Right, absolutely. And also, Mrs. Blackwell has, Blackwell has really been on me about making certain is how do parents, if they are concerned, if they have complaints, how do their voices get heard? And through her leadership and talking to her about sort of what she's thinking that we can move forward, the committee can see what do they want and how does that look and what's the next step? So if a parent is not satisfied with whatever the decision is, then what's the next step so that the parent can be heard? So that those, those are some other things that she's asked me to look at so that it can be brought to the committee and they can get a better understanding about what are all those, I say, steps that need to be done to approve or disapprove, or agree or disagree, and it can be a healthy debate and discussion about a topic.
And I think it's worthy of noting and definitely commending Dr. Kapiki for the parent advisory council or whatever you choose that name, because that really will complement your committee, and that'll be kind of a checks and balances in place, which I don't think we've really had, and, you know, in this whole entire process of approvals. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
While we have Jay up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be so kind as to explain to the public about these board committees, how they are operated, what that looks like
Sure.
from a legal perspective, so that the public understands what will occur during these committees and what governs what occurs?
Okay. So obviously, you will quickly tell me if I'm not answering your question, but what's important for the committees to know, and what is important for the public to know, is that the committee that is, that is created from this board is obviously an ad hoc committee or an advisory committee, and what that committee is tasked with is what a specific role. So in regards to that specific role, they tackle that issue, they figure out a solution to that issue or get some more information, they dig deeper, they till deeper into the soil, and then bring back their information to this board to approve or disapprove, not to offend that committee, but they may be in left field and stay in left field, and this board may say, whoa, wait a second, we need, we need to be more online with what we're looking at. But it doesn't mean they're not valuable, because they're very valuable into digging deeper on a topic than this board can, can do twice a month. So that committee can make recommendations, can make suggestions, can make an idea about this is how we think this topic needs to be addressed, and bring back either one option or multiple options to this board to then chew on and figure out what's the best thing to do community-wide. So they're more into the weeds on a topic, and this board is a little bit higher in elevation in essence.
But just for clarity, again, for the public, these committees are open and it's public information?
Exactly.
Okay. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so that these committees are open to the public, and they are, they should be welcomed to come in and participate and see what's going on, not disrupt, but see what's going on, and also engage in that committee as best they can, so that that committee can also be a conduit, a good liaison with the public as to what the public is saying. And hopefully, it'll, there'll be some good interaction, and we can tackle these issues, or the committee can tackle these issues on a good discussion level. And because, you know, great ideas come from many, not from single people. They can start from a single person, but they got to be molded over, they got to be developed. And that's where this committee is, and that's where the public engagement in the committee is helpful as well. And if the public wants to come in and complain to this board about what the committee is doing, they certainly have their right, but it would be more productive to talk about in that committee to see what can be done there. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Adcock, did you have another comment?
No, I did receive that email, and honestly, I did not take it that way because when I look at the, she provides the link for the Empower supplemental book list and wanted feedback from us on that, so if there was any problems with that, we could have responded back to it. So I did read that, but I didn't, I mean, I think she was just letting us know that, and then we were able to give that feedback to her prior to it. So there was a list given with the books on it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Carpenter, did you have anything else, or you're good?
Well, the only other last question I have, I know you talked about doing a parent committee. Now, it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that each school, I mean, elementary on through, do have a parent committee that oversees the selection of books? Is that correct? And could that committee not work hand-in-hand with this other committee?
So the answer to your question, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but if I look at Policy 3200 and Policy 3210, that would be correct. There's actually another one in there too regarding, in my head, I'm pulling up supplemental materials and media approval of documents. So that's correct. But what I'm talking about is to engage folks and explain to them what it is that we do so we improve the trust level amongst our community and our parents, especially of the things that we're doing in the classrooms and the schools. To talk about what is our reading curriculum, what is our math curriculum, what are some of the supplemental materials that belong in? For example, this, I'm just pulling this off the top of my head, if you're teaching AP Language and Composition, what are the supplemental reads that are available to our students? If you are taking a, you're taking a chemistry class, what does the lab look like with the chemistry class? If you're taking a middle school, middle school course selection, what are the courses that kids are taking, and what is involved in those courses? So when I said earlier, talking about scope and sequence and the, you know, what is the scope and sequence of that course throughout the course of the year? What's the rationale, the reason behind it, and how's it aligned to standards? Just have a lot of good, healthy discussion and with parents and the community, this is what's going on in your school system. Most parents are very aware and keen, but I just think anything you do that opens up the door for discussion with the community is a positive and helps us all understand what we're doing in the classroom. And I want to be, again, I want to be very, very clear about this, our teachers are doing incredible work, but we're naive if we think we're not making mistakes. And we're not, and we're also naive if we think that we're getting it right 100% of the time. And that's where I think the conversation can be very powerful, so that we're having honest dialogue, understanding what the expectations of our community are here. So yes, that's a long answer. Sure, yes, there are other, there are other committees that take place. I'm looking at it from a broader perspective, and I know, this isn't, from my perspective, this isn't a one and done. This is something I want to do every month, and we have an agenda, we have a topic, we come up every month and we meet. There's a lot of stuff to talk about, there's a lot of things. When you talk curriculum and you're talking about 34,000 students, 4,000 employees, 44 schools, this isn't done in a month. This is something you do on a regular, consistent basis every month, and you continue to engage your community. And I just think it'd be a very healthy way to, as I said, improve trust and have that conversation, that two-way conversation back and forth.
So I'm going to speak to that just real quickly because I'm not sure that every school has that parent group, so, go ahead, K.
Yeah, the one policy talks about the committee that I think
In 3200, it has school improvement team, professional learning team, school media and technology committee, et cetera. So there's a lot and technology committee, et cetera. So there's a lot of different individuals. And that's what, what we were trying to do is streamline it a little bit better. So instead of what committee am I on today?
Right. I think that's the whole point. You know, we've got so many doing so many different things, because they all have to have a school improvement team, but I don't think they all have to have a parent advisory group. Or we thought, I thought, as many years as I've been on, it was the actual media person or the IT person who actually was part of that approval process, not so much as, okay.
Right.
So that's, just speaks to how much-
They are. To your point, they are. You're right.
Right. Okay. All right. So aligning all that with those processes to me and with those policies just makes it that much more clear of what the process should be for the board.
And one of the things is the policy that we have now does not really speak a lot about parent involvement. And that's one thing that Mrs. Blackwell's been passionate about is to have a parent in the room to help have the perspective from what a parent would be looking at. Not that the teacher, not that the principal, not that the others, not parents, but a different perspective, you know, wearing a parent hat completely 24/7 as opposed to the teacher's hat.
Right.
Mrs. Grims, if I may too. To your point, to what, what our solicitor is saying, that consistent approach is what we're looking for. And to your point, the more consistent we become through that conversation and dialogue, the, the better it is that we don't make these mistakes and a lot of confusion is out there. So you're absolutely correct in making that statement. I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. All right. Ms. Blackwell.
So I think you guys covered all of the things that I wanted to say, so I appreciate that. But I definitely want to thank Denise and Carolyn for being on this committee with us, and Kelly Probst, and Jay White. I appreciate all your expertise as we move forward with this. Dr. Kapicki, as you, as you move forward with your parent program, I look forward to working with you guys and finding out the information that you, that you learn during those committee meetings, so that we can all work together to find a solution for this. So like they said, our meeting is Wednesday. So this Wednesday, May the 6th, at 6 o'clock, it will be here at the Ed Center. We certainly would appreciate folks coming to observe this meeting. We look forward to working through these policies. The first goal that we have as a committee is to make sure that our policies close any loops, any gaps that we have right now. You know, I think for a long time, each school has kind of been able to do their own thing, which has led to a lot of confusion, not just from board members, but also from parents and other administration, as well as to what is actually happening and, and taking place in the schools as we go through these policies. So, again, it's closing these gaps, making sure that we have a good streamlined process for that. So we look forward to kind of tackling these first four policies on Wednesday, and then moving forward from there to create a solution. So please, please, if you are available Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, come up here. We will have chairs available for you. I'm always available. If you need to talk to me, please shoot me an email if you have any questions about this moving forward.
Mr. Furr?
Yeah. I guess I'm not as giddy as, as you guys are on this, this topic. I mean, you can, you know, having more communication absolutely makes, makes things better. But with the, what has happened and what has, has been sent to us pretty much on a weekly matter the last few weeks is, to me, is disturbing. I don't care how many policies, how many procedures, if we've got people in our system that thinks those books are okay, you know, to me, you got, we got issues. And I hope this closes the gap. I've heard a lot of, a lot of good words used up here, but it disturbs me that someone in our system thinks this is okay. I mean, you know, you talk about constitution, you talk about policies. I don't know any, anywhere where it's okay. And, and so until we can, and I don't know how to solve that, I know we, I know we, just like you've said earlier, Dr. Kapicki reacts quickly and things get taken care of. But there's a, there's a, there's a problem with any, when any of this gets to our kids. And so, but yeah, anything's going to help. But I still think that there's a deep, deep cause or deep root there that we got to figure out. That's all.
Mr. Ralter?
I guess we've had 25 minutes of discussion on stuff related to this agenda item. But back to the agenda item, it appears that you have made some changes to these policies that the committee that Laura has is going to review and give feedback. Has this, can you explain what the changes are? Have they gone to the policy committee? Or what is the process here?
They have not gone to the policy committee. The idea was to come up with a, a sort of a rough draft of what the committee could look at and figure out what the committee is wanting, make the recommendations from Laura's committee, to then send to the policy committee, for the policy committee to then vet it and go through it and make certain that it meets whatever the standards of the policy committee, and then come back to the board.
Okay. But we're asked to, we're being asked here on the agenda item to produce something out of first reading. So just want to know what those, can you go through some of those changes and what you're suggesting that we consider, the committee consider?
Sure. So, just some of the, some of the things that have been recommended is that under subsection A1, instructional material, materials definitions, the prior 3200 does not outline well what's the difference between core instructional materials, supplemental instructional, instructional materials and media collections. So that I wanted to break that out to at least define it a little bit better, so that people would understand it and could, people could follow it better. So I pulled that out. In regards to the objectives for a selection of the instructional materials, there was some objectives, they were more, I don't remember if they were numerical or not. I put it in numerical form so that they could see what the objectives are in regards to selecting the core instructional materials, the supplemental materials, as well as the media collections. And specifically, I'd have to-
You've got some things highlighted in yellow and some things highlighted in blue.
Right.
I don't know if we can bring that up?
I'm going, I'll get to that in a second. In regards to, I'm sorry, but I can jump down there if you would like.
No, I'm just-
One of the things that I, that, that I, I can't find it right now, but I did put in here in regards to the objectives is that-
Jay, if I can interrupt just for a moment?
Sure.
I think what'll help with some of this, and Rob, this may help with your question as well. I think what would be most beneficial is having these policies looked at and reviewed at the meeting for Laura's committee. And that way, they can kind of vet in the alignment of the policy.
That's what he said it's going to do. I just want it for the public's purpose.
And what else?
You're presenting something to us tonight that's on the agenda. It's listed here. You've got things highlighted. Just what, what are we changing?
We're not changing anything. So let's be clear before you make the statement. Hang on. We're not changing anything. These policies are going to be sent to Laura's-
Yeah. It's all suggestions.
Right. But we're not-
Nothing's being changed.
Right. So the board's the only one that can change anything. So, hang on. So just so the viewing audience is very clear and everybody else is very clear. These policies will be vetted by Laura's committee on Wednesday. If there are to be any changes or recommendations, then it does have to go to the policy committee. But it would come to us as well. So we'll be in alignment of it being vetted by Laura's committee, vetted by the policy committee, and then vetted by us. So there will, there will not be any changes before the board actually sees any of those recommendations.
Okay. But we still have a, we still have an agenda item that says, consider approval for policies on first reading as presented. And I'm seeing what the changes are, what the suggestions are, is what I'm asking. And you've started reviewing that. I'd like you, if there's anything else, please go ahead.
Okay. So Jay, I did not see that, that says the policies on first read. I think that's a typo. It is a typo. That is not there for tonight.
So that was intended, Rob, to put that on the agenda for review, not for, for vote. So I apologize for that inaccuracy there. If that's not there-
Okay. So it's in the wrong spot.
Correct.
That was not on there when I did the agenda approval. So just, we're going to take that off. That's a typo.
That responsibility falls on me.
Okay. So in that case, what's, what are the highlights that you want them to know?
Well, the highlights, what I wanted to do is I wanted to make certain that for district-wide materials, what, district-wide materials, I did not know whether or not there are district-wide materials that are selected by the administration for supplemental instructional materials. So I wanted to make certain, is there supplemental instructional materials that is made, a decision is made in this office, obviously district-wide, or is all supplemental materials in each school? So that's what I, I highlighted that, because I wanted to make certain that I didn't miss that for a final. I put that in there because I didn't want it to be missed. Okay? In regards to the district-wide materials, I wanted to make certain that everybody knew that the superintendent does retain the ultimate responsibility for the section, selection of district-wide materials. That's according to standards. I added that down into the school-level materials, and I wasn't satisfied that's the right answer there, because I wanted to highlight it so I could discuss that further and raise that for anybody that's going to look at it as, hey, you need to focus in, Hornier. This was put in here. Let's make certain that it's discussed. And does that need to stay there or not? And then what happens is, under the process, is that the materials' overall purpose, educational significance, and direct relationship, I added that in there with the system's instructional goals and curriculum. That wasn't in there before that I recall. So I think that's important from what I hear this board wanting to do is not only does it have to have the overall purpose and the educational significance, but it also should be, have a direct relationship to what the system's instructional goals and curriculum is. And then the, under five, I did add number three, the appropriateness and educational suitability of the material. And I did add, also, I wanted to, I was searching for the Cabarrus County boards. I may have typed in boards twice, but anyway, boards, standard privacy terms and conditions. I couldn't find that at, when I first glanced through that. But I know in my conversations with Dr. Kapicki and Madame Scher, and briefly with Mrs. Blackwell, is if there are books that are selected, or if there's online books that are available to our students, is there a way we can filter what they have access to instead of the whole wide web? Because there's some things on there that the kids should not be reviewing and be using as supplemental materials. And I wanted to make certain that whatever this policy does coincides with the board's standard privacy and terms conditions. And to the extent it doesn't, does this board want to take under, have an understanding that if we select a vendor, or excuse me, if y'all select a vendor, that that vendor has the capabilities to have parental controls or filters on there as to what books the student, either by age or by grade level, is having access to, instead of, like I said, a plethora of books online. So those are the things that I'm, those are the, the basis, basic changes that I made in 3200 for review.
Okay. So, if I'm interested- If I'm interested in getting involved with that, I have a perfect opportunity on Wednesday to come talk about it and learn more. Is that all right?
Wednesday would be good. Yes. And also, what I was going to do is redline what 3200 was with the changes that were made, so people can look at the comparison and decide what they want to do. Sometimes it gets so much, it's kind of difficult to go back and forth, but I was going to do that as well.
I think that'd be helpful to see what changes are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, Rob, do you plan on attending Wednesday?
I don't know yet.
So just, so everyone understands, I'll notice that there would be more than three there that night, but there will not be any business conducted by the Board of Education if a fourth member shows up. Not that y'all can't come, and you should, just so that we notice that there will be no business conducted by the Board of Education.
Now, there will be discussion made by the Denise, Carolyn and Laura, but there will not be a decision made and not be, there will not be a public meeting of this board.
Right. Okay. Ms. Ralter, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Sandage?
I've got so much to say, but I know we, we don't want to be here all night. So I'm going to start with a few things. First of all, Dr. Kapicki, I just want to send you a shout-out. You have come into this district and you have literally hit the ground running. We have thrown so many things at you. This community has thrown so many things at you. And I don't believe you get the accolades that you deserve to know that, like, we have put you through a lot, and yet you still stand tall, you still smile, you still answer our calls. And I just want to say, I appreciate that. Secondly, I want to go on record saying our staff, like, you guys are super heroes. The same things that I just said about Dr. Kapicki, like, this weekend, I spent time on the phone with so many different people who are concerned with what's happening in our community. We are so divided, and we have to stop this right now. Truly. And if we, the Board of Education, has signed up to be the nucleus of making sure that this division stops, let's do that. You know, if we need to have a parent community, committee who, you know, kind of is that go-between, hey, are you okay with this? What are your thoughts about that? I absolutely think that we should do that. Secondly, I really want us to understand how policies are put into place. And I know, Sue Burns, you are the guru, at least you're my guru, I don't know if everybody else is, on how we get policies, how they come to us, how we, you know, what we look at them. Can you just explain that a little bit? Because I know that policies come down from one place, and then we look at them in one place, and then it comes to the board in one place, on one first read, second read. Can you break that down? Or Jay, I don't know if you feel comfortable breaking that down, but just so the, the community understands how we get here.
I'll, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Sue, but, but I know you know.
That's fine. That's fine. Yes, our policies are, are based on, on law, mostly. Okay? So, Cabarrus County Schools, we have a subscription to a service that is called PLS. So y'all will hear PLS updates. That's Policies to Lead the Schools. That comes from the North Carolina School Board Association, who have lots of attorneys that look at, number one, law changes, any changes in law that would change a policy that we would want to follow, because we need to follow the law. Or if they see trends across the state, either lawsuits or issues that schools call them about, they see trends where they might be able to put policy change in that would help schools operate in a more efficient manner. So that's where, and we get those updates twice. How, I don't know how specific you want me to get, but we get those, a list of updates twice a year. Then the policy committee will review the policies once I have inserted their changes into our policy. So then our policy committee will review those changes, make, decide to accept them or not. Some are required, some aren't. And then it comes to you all for first read, the work session, then the business meeting, and then the second month is the second read. And once you all vote on those, the second read, and you say, yes, we agree with this, then there's, those changes are sent to our service that, that puts them on the website. So that's, that's one, that's one avenue into how we get our policies. Another way is if the district is seeing an issue that we feel needs to be addressed and it could be addressed in policy. So just, that is very specific to us, where we would change how something is done. In this curriculum, this is a good example, like, what works best for our, our district. So someone will, will come up with changes and present those changes to the policy committee. They'll make other revisions or not, and then it goes through the same process. Another avenue is for the board to actually say, someone brings it to the board, and, and I think I've seen this once, where, where one of the board members says, I would like this policy changed. I wanted to say this in the board, can look at it as a first read, and then the next month, a second read, and then that change happens. But normally, any changes will go through the policy committee, just because we have representatives from all areas of, of our district, all departments, and principals, and that type of thing.
Thank you, Sue. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's fine.
The other thing that I was going to say is, you know, we've got hundreds, maybe thousands of policies, and I'm sure that they are not all perfect. I'm sure we can drive a truck through a lot of them. And, you know, to expect us to be perfect, as you alluded to earlier, Dr. Kapicki, is, it's just, it's not right. You know, we identify some things, and, you know, if it was intentional, you know, then yeah, that's not okay. But I, for, for the life of me, I can't believe that a teacher would intentionally, or a person would intentionally do something that would hurt a child. I, I can't see us employing those type of people. And that's just me personally. I think if we identify something, we point it out, you know, and, and allow for the system to do what the system has been set up to do, to create, correct the issue, if that, that is what it is. I'll also say, you know, just because I don't want my child to read or see something, I can't say that another parent will think the same way. And we've got to allow freedom for both of those parents and both of those children. And I am truly hoping that we allow for those freedoms to speak loudly in these committees, and, and not just one-sidedly. and, and not just one-sidedly. Another thing, as board members, we're not perfect either, you know, we don't get it right. We, we hear your concerns, we hear your frustrations, and I promise you, I know I do, and I've seen other board members here do everything in their power to listen and make the best decisions based off of what they can do as an individual board member. And I think that, that also has to be realized, you know, we're all human beings up here, and I hope that you guys don't expect for us to always get it because we won't. And if you do, please sprinkle some of that on me because I want to always get it, okay? Lastly, we have to be very intentional about how we move forward in this community. You know, I've been here for a long time and I chose this community on purpose. I chose this community for the school district, okay? I was a case manager in six other districts, and my family chose this one because of how they treated the children and the educators that were here. So I think that a lot of parents do the same thing, so we have to be very intentional about how we move forward because we will absolutely get further if we move forward together. And I hope that everybody has identified that or will identify that. That's all I got. I got more, but I'm going to be quiet now.
Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm assuming by consensus, everyone agrees that these policies will be sent to Laura's committee for further vetting at her meeting, and then recommendations will be sent to the policy committee and then back to us. All good? Shake of the heads? Okay, great. Dr. Kupicki, do you have anything else on that?
No, ma'am, I just want to again thank the board for their action and for constantly reviewing things and being patient through the process. I also commend you for bringing this to our attention and for taking a leadership role and making sure that we continue to look at what we're doing in terms of processes, protocols, that we're getting it right, so thank you.
We will move to 6.02, Board Protocols, and I will turn it over to Board Member Adcock.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back over the meeting protocols that were handed out to you guys at our last meeting that was in April, and wanted to just ask if anyone has any questions about these. Again, I just want to state that these meeting protocols are representative of what's in our current policies for ethics of the board. These protocols were developed by the North Carolina State School Board Association, and it's a tool to use as board members just to give us some snippets of what we do when we're in a, a board meeting. So I'll just open up and see if there's any questions about these. I would like to add this to the consent agenda to be voted on next week.
And do you mind reading those, all 12, please?
Sure, I will. So number one, it says board members will start with the common belief that everyone has good intentions. Number two, board members will review pertinent information and ask questions prior to the meeting. Number three, board members will create a safe environment for the productive exchange of ideas. Number four, board members will sincerely listen and seek to understand the viewpoints of others. Number five, board members will solve problems through a collaborative process where all participants support the decision and actively work towards its implementation. Number six, board members will understand the relationship between the superintendent and any individual board members, his collegial, not hierarchical, based on mutual respect for their complementary roles. Board members will respect that the superintendent is accountable only to the full Board of Education. Board members working in partnership with the superintendent have the right to expect performance, candor, and honesty from one another. Number nine, board members understand the importance of speaking with one clear voice to the superintendent. Number 10, board members have an obligation to express their opinions and respect others' opinions. Number 11, board members have the right to disagree with the decision of the board, but understand the importance of abiding by the majority decisions of the board. And number 12, no board member or subset of the Board of Education has the authority to act or speak on behalf of the board without the consent of the board.
Okay, I will open it up and I'll start with Ms. Sandage. Comments or questions?
Sounds pretty open and shut to me.
Mr. Walter?
I think they're all reasonable.
Mr. Fur?
I'm ready to go. It's fine.
Ms. Blackwell?
Thank you for presenting these. They all, they all sound very reasonable and I look forward to working under these protocols, so I appreciate it.
Ms. Carpenter?
I agree 100%. Consent for me.
I think we're good, Ms. Adcock.
Thank you for letting me present that.
Consent agenda, you're welcome, and thank you for bringing it. Okay, 6.03, Policies for Approval on First Read. I will have Ms. Burns to the podium and I'm just going to do like we normally do. Policy number 2121, Board Member Conflict of Interest. Policy number 2210, Duties of Officers. Policy number 2410, Policy Development. Policy number 2420, Adoption of Policies. Policy number 2430, Dissemination and Preservation of Policies. Policy number 2440, Policy Review and Evaluation. Policy number 2450, Suspension of Board Policies. Policy number 2600, Consultants to the Board. Policy 4110, Immunization and Health Requirements for School Admission. Ms. Burns, have you had any comments or questions from board members?
Uh, no, ma'am, I have not.
Okay, then I will open up the floor and I will start with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter?
No comments.
Ms. Blackwell?
No comments.
Mr. Fur?
No comments.
Mr. Walter?
Guess I have to be the one to have comments. I don't like the fact that we're rescinding some policies, I think it was fine the way, kind of the way it was, and if you read the policy, the way these revisions are, it's nothing close to what Ms. Burns said earlier, Sue, on what the policy procedures are.
Which, I'm sorry, which policy are you referencing?
We have policy development, we have, that we're revising, we have adoptions of policies that we're rescinding, we're having dissemination of, preservation of policies, which we're revising, we're rescinding policy review and evaluation, we're rescinding suspension of board policies, those are the ones I'm talking about, two of those are I'm okay with, the dissemination of perseverance, preservation of policies, I think that's fine, and the policy review and evaluation, I think that's okay as well, to rescind because it is copied somewhere else. But suspension of board policies, I think is completely separate than actually developing a board policy, and I just didn't like the way it was revised, so that I'm not in favor of it.
Can, can I explain a little bit about the update on 2410 Policy Development? We've had 2410, 2420, 2440, and 2450. The three that were rescinded are very short, and what the PLS update said was, let's just put all, all four of those into one policy. And so they're rescinded because they are added into Policy 2410, so that might look a little confusing.
It's not a word-for-word incorporation.
So that would be, the PLS update service may have changed some of, some of that, the verbiage, and they probably updated it, these haven't been updated in, gosh, some of them 20 years. Let's see.
So, Sue, I think for the viewing audience, we might need to clarify, that's coming down from the state recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, these are, these are, all of these are PLS update revisions, and they're not, you know, they're recommended revisions, so, you know, it's the pleasure of the board whether you want to accept these or not.
But they are the recommendations from the state.
Yes, and some of them are updating things such as, you know, you will provide hard copy board policies to all of the board, each of the board members and schools, and we used to do that. We used to have probably 20 or more of those hard copy books. Now we only have one, and that's what they say that we have to have, is one board policy, and everything is available online. So some of this was just updating what our current process is so that it makes sense and people aren't looking for hard copy board books that are, you know, pretty big.
Very, very thick.
Yeah.
And we have to spend the money copying all those as well.
Yeah.
So, now, Mr. Walter, I'm, I'm a little confused, say one more time what.
That is not the one I'm, I think that one is fine. What I'm saying is you've, you've rescinding the adoption of policies, and if you read the adoptions of policies that we're rescinding, it is not what is in the revision of the policy development, and it is not at all what Ms. Burns just talked about not too long ago about how our policies are, policy procedures are done. So.
I tell you what, just for time, and I wish you would have sent an email because I think it's very confusing what you just said, especially to me, so let's just do this. How about you email that, copy me on it, send it to Ms. Burns explaining exactly where you have an issue with it, and let's discuss this a little further. We don't have to put this on consent agenda tonight, we'll, we'll pull that, but will you just please send an email and?
I'd be happy to. So you're going to say 2410, 2420, and 2450, and you're going to leave them for next week? Is that all right?
Okay, say those again.
2410, 2420, and 2450.
You want pulled?
Yes.
Okay. 2410, 2420, and 2450, and the others you're good for consent?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're going to send an email and you're going to copy, you're going to send it to, to Ms. Burns and copy Dr. Kupicki and I on it?
You and Laura.
Yeah, please do, and Laura, yes. All right. Okay, and Ms. Sandage, did you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay, so, board members, we are going to pull 2410, 2420, and 2450, and the others will be placed on consent agenda. Everyone good for that? Okay, Ms. Burns, you good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6.04, Approval of the Cabarrus County Schools 2022-2025 AIG Plan, and we'll have Mrs. Kelly Donahue to the podium. Okay, not good. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Thank you for having me here this evening. I am Kelly Donahue. I am the AIG, which stands for Academically and Intellectually Gifted Coordinator for Cabarrus County Schools. I would like to share an overview of our programming plan for 2022 through 2025. While you received communications containing the full plan, I have a handout for tonight, did you? Thank you. Tonight's handout provides some highlights of that plan.
Is this my clicker?
Awesome. Okay. Our newly revised plan builds on the successes of our current and previous three-year plans. Each LEA must revise their plan every three years and use the state AIG program standards to develop a plan that coordinates and implements thoughtful and comprehensive AIG programs, meets the academic, intellectual, social, and emotional needs of gifted learners, and optimally develops AIG student potential. Specifically, the plan must address these six standards that you see here and multiple practices within each of those. Gifted programming in North Carolina is funded at 4% of average daily membership. This is true for every district in North Carolina. Here in Cabarrus County Schools, we currently serve 16 and 1/2% of the student population as AIG. When looking at the standard, the standardized test data for our gifted learners in Cabarrus County, you can see that in most cases, greater than 95% of identified students are proficient on grade level or course content based on EOG and EOC scores. Additionally, data shows that both pre-pandemic and the most recent 2021 growth scores for our gifted learners meet or exceed growth expectations in almost all grade levels or Considering the program practices and our current data, the revised 2022 through 2025 plan focuses on building equitable and sustainable services. We believe that addressing these five areas specifically in our plan will allow us to attain the state's goal of providing equity and excellence in gifted education. The first area to address is multidimensional screening and identification. In order to identify students, we must first nurture the potential of all students, and we do this through our LIFT, which stands for Learning Interventions for Talented Programming. These are whole class enrichment lessons for all students in first and second grade. They support the development of portfolios for AIG nomination, and this is also recognized as an NCDPI promising practice for fostering talent development. Another key to identifying students is to administer a universal screening tool. We use the Naglieri Nonverbal Aptitude Test to screen all second graders. This screener is a way to systematically identify exceptional potential and hidden talent among all populations, including English language learners, students with special needs, and students who may not be achieving on other traditional academic measures. Finally, our identification criteria include three unique pathways. Our IG pathway identifies students that show an exceptional potential to learn but may not be achieving in the same way. Pathways two and three are designed to identify students that have high aptitude scores with an achievement that isn't quite as high, or high achievement scores with an aptitude score that isn't quite as high. The next area addressed in our plan is rigorous and challenging curriculum. As you can see, gifted and advanced learners in Cabarrus County Schools follow a continuum of services. In grades one and two, all students participate in the LIFT Talent Development, which focuses on thinking skills. In grades three through five, AIG identified students participate in an enrichment program that layers on top of the standard course of study and focuses on thinking skills, problem solving, research, communication, and personal growth. The goal is to equip students for the secondary level career as students. In grades six through eight, advanced learners, including AIG identified students, take advanced courses called for Language Arts, ALPS, Advanced Language Arts Programming for Students, or AMPS, which is the math equivalent, Advanced Math Program for Students. This is an accelerated model that allows students to earn high school credits in eighth grade. In grades nine through 12, we have an open enrollment model. Any student can take honors, AP, or dual enrollment courses that support their personal four-year goals. The advanced course enrollment options in middle and high school are also recognized by NCDPI as promising practices. One of the goals of the new 2022-2025 plan is to focus on communication with high schoolers and their families. By partnering with Student Services, we are able to utilize the Navient software to give students tools to plan their four years according to their goals and an appropriate level of challenge, and thereby increasing access to advanced courses. The third area addressed in building equitable and sustainable services is supporting, is supporting the social and emotional needs of gifted learners. Because gifted learners need tools to navigate both their inner world and the world around them, our AIG specialists have developed lessons that incorporate some of the most common social and emotional struggles experienced by gifted learners. These topics include common characteristics of giftedness, growth mindset, learning characteristics of the gifted, and self-awareness, and methods of self-advocacy. After engaging in these lessons, students report positive outcomes in the form of a stronger understanding of what it means to be gifted and greater awareness of how setting goals can have a positive impact on their development, and it encourages resilience when met with challenges. The fourth area addressed in the plan is professional development. The AIG department has developed a local endorsement for K-12 teachers and staff to promote a basic understanding of the characteristics of gifted learners and implementation strategies, strategies, and differentiated content for advanced learners. This is an eight-month-long course facilitated by our AIG specialists and designed to help teachers of advanced learners and gifted clusters to be more effective in their work with these populations. As of 2021-2022, 565 educators district-wide have completed this endorsement. This course is open to all K-12 educators and CCS, it's free of charge, and we are proud to report that other districts look at our department as they seek to implement a similar model based on the precedent that we have set. The final critical element to building equitable and sustainable services is family engagement. The AIG department promotes two-way communication in a variety of ways. Our annual parent meeting content mirrors the student's social and emotional lessons, and we work to equip parents with the knowledge of giftedness and the whole child. Communication is designed to meet the needs of busy schedules and is offered in a variety Communication is designed to meet the needs of busy schedules and is offered in a variety of formats. Some other ways that we engage families include the development of differentiated education plans. We also maintain a CCS AIG website containing general information. We have an AIG-at-home Google site where parents can locate enrichment resources, and we also have a CCS AIG Facebook page. We also offer a parent book study and discussion group led by an AIG specialist with the SANG facilitator training, and SANG is a national organization that stands for Supporting Emotional Needs of the Gifted. This facilitator leads multiple six-week sessions for parents each year. Pending your approval, the 2022-2025 local AIG plan will be submitted to the state for review. The final plan will be posted and available to the public on the Gifted Ed webpage this summer. Thank you for your time, consideration, and support of our gifted and advanced learners.
Thank you, and I will open the floor for discussion. I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
This was a lot of information, and I appreciate getting all of this information and be able to review it ahead of time. The only question I had was, do you feel like you have the resources you need in your program to continue to be great?
We would always welcome more resources, of course, because we are serving a large portion of the population. So we do a lot with what we have, I will say that.
Okay, so it sounds like you're good.
Depends on what you're offering.
Well, I would be definitely willing to learn more about additional resources that you--
Wonderful.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I do wanna echo what she just said about that, because you're--you know, our local funding is only $200,000 for all these--
Yes, yes. So, the state funding covers the staff that we have currently serving our identified students, and then the local funding goes toward the universal screener, the purchase of that, the licenses for that, as well as some materials or supplies.
It just didn't seem like it very much compared to the number of kids that you just said, you get 24,000 or 4,300 kids that we're serving.
Yes.
I guess the basic question, what are the changes between this plan and the plan we had three years ago?
So, there are just a few changes. A lot of them deal with the communication, especially with the high school families. We felt like there was a need there. There was a gap in how we were going to address their needs in terms of communicating with them, so that's why we wanted to partner with Student Services. So that's one of the big changes. A lot of things are staying the same because we are a model in the state for most of the things that we accomplish, and we also--the last plan, or the current plan that we're on, the first year of it was 2019-2020. So a lot of the things that came into play during this three-year plan, we haven't fully fleshed out, and we wanted to continue those, particularly with identifying students using our universal screening tool and continuing with that LIFT model to make sure that we're identifying all the students that we can.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you if that was a part of--because you said you have 16.5%. Last time it was like 18%.
It was, yes.
Why it was part of the--
Yes, so obviously, there are students that did experience some challenges during time off from school and things like that, and there were families that opted not to test, so they could regain some of that ground, or they didn't want to come into school, say, last year and take a test, so.
I guess that makes sense. The only other thing that I didn't see here is, we talked about equity, diversity. Are we talking--are we trying to hit different minority populations?
Always, yes.
How do we rank there? You know, we didn't get any data on any of that.
So, we are well-represented in our subgroup populations, our Asian students, our indigenous populations, and our multiracial populations. Areas that we are trying to improve our representation are Hispanic, Black, and White.
Would you be able to share that with us, if you have it?
Yeah, I don't--
Not today, not today.
Can I email you that exact--
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's all I had. Thank you very much for the work and effort put in.
Thank you.
Mr. Furr?
Kelly, if you do email that, please CC me on it.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your thorough presentation, and I've always been impressed with this program, especially with the amount of resources you have. And I'm a--I got a grandson that's in AIG, and obviously, he takes after his pop-pop. And so I've followed it pretty closely over the last few years. It's pretty good. Thanks.
Ms. Blackwell?
So, again, thank you for the presentation that you presented tonight. I do have a couple of questions. So regarding, when you talk about examples of social, emotional needs that they might have, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, I can. So, gifted people, and this is not just children, gifted adults as well, tend to experience life through a lens of intensities, and so we just wanna help them understand this is what giftedness is defined as, and this may be how you react to certain situations, or how you may feel in certain situations, just to be aware of that and to know how to fit into a group setting, or into a classroom setting, or how to set your goals if you are experiencing some, maybe perfectionism, where it's very difficult for you to move forward because you're worried of failure. We wanna help them to understand all of those things. So that's just kind of a big overview of that.
Okay, and then Rob's question about the equity piece of it, too, was also one that I, you know, was just kind of concerned about, just because we hear a lot of--we hear words right now, just in the times that we live in, and social and emotional learning and equity are two of those, and so I just wanted to get kind of a better understanding of what we meant when we said that.
Yes, and so, and just to let you know that the data that I will send you, we calculate something called a representation index, so it looks at the percentage of identified students within the district as it is proportional to the percentage of those students in that subgroup overall, and so that's what you'll receive. I have a listing of those that I can send you. And that, the two things that we do, LIFT and a universal screening tool, are two of the biggest ways that you can try to achieve equity, and that is recognized nationally through research, and that's why we engage in those two practices.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
As she's talking about the social and emotional needs, did you do anything that compared the last two to three years? Did you see a big difference in that, in what we were experiencing?
So, anecdotally, yes. We have not collected data on that in terms of, you know, a formal survey of students, but anecdotally, our teachers have noticed that, and I've even noticed that in some parent calls that I have received. So, and they are always very thankful that we are addressing that with our lessons with those students to try and help them navigate through that.
So you did do an adjustment then with that?
Yeah, we constantly are adjusting, making sure that what we are doing in our lessons is addressing the needs, and sometimes that may just be in that particular school. There might be more of a need for something than in another school in terms of how the lesson is delivered, but we have standardized lessons that we give to our team, and that our team develops, and then we tweak those as needed, based on feedback.
Is this only for the--and I was noticing it seemed like there's--is this only for the child, or is this for the whole family unit?
So we offer those same, that same material in a condensed format in a parent meeting for parents as well, and that is also the purpose of our book study and parent discussion group that our facilitator engages in, so that families have the opportunity to hear about those things and talk to other parents and to the facilitators about what's going on with their child and how best they can address it.
Because that's what I seem to get from this presentation. Again, your presentation is wonderful, and I have to kind of echo what some of my other board members had said. With the amount of funds that you are receiving, kudos.
Thank you.
We're getting a lot of bang for our buck, which we appreciate, but your presentation's wonderful, and thank you for what you're doing for our children.
Thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
Yes, thank you for this. I do have a couple of questions, and I think it really comes from feedback that I've gotten as a board member, and I know other board members may have gotten the same feedback. How do we appropriate AP programs to high schools? We get feedback, you know, that, oh, I want my child to be in this AP class, but they're not gonna have it at this particular high school. So how do you decide where those go?
So, that is not something that I decide on. Does anyone else wanna speak to that, or is there--
Ben, would you please?
Sure. I can send you a much more detailed response, but at a high level, it's based on student requests. So, we offer AP classes, AP US History, AP Lit, AP Lang, AP Bio, AP Chem. Some of those make every year, but it's almost always based on student requests at school. So you can imagine the complexity and permutations of making that happen when a high school principal gets five requests for a course. That means we have to have a course for five kids, or have to find another way. We do all kinds of creative things to make sure students have access to courses, offer it through online options, through NCVPS, teachers teaching during their planning period across schools, with what everything we learned about blended and remote during the pandemic. There was some good that came out of that, but it's difficult, and so I can give you a full breakdown of what's offered. I can even show you for each school what those requests are by school, by student, by year, if you wanted it, but it's complex.
Yeah, and I don't really need that detail. I was really just asking for the parents that send us emails, what would be the best way for us to get the information these parents needed? Like, if they send me an email, who would I send that to so they could respond to them?
I think they should send it to me and the principal of the school to make sure that the principal can respond to that. I think most times, we can clear things up with some communication directly between the principal or the school and the parent.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate those answers.
Okay, board members, all good for the consent agenda? Yes, okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to 6.05, property lease, Cox Mill Elementary School. We will have Mr. Tim Louder to the podium.
Thank you, Chairman Rimsley and board members, Mr. Dr. Kapicki. I'm here tonight to present to you a--for your information mostly. As you know, the City of Concord is building a new park up next to Cox Mill High School and Cox Mill Elementary School. It's the J.E. Ramsor Park for Jim Ramsor. Unfortunately, Jim passed this past weekend, but it's in the honor of him, and in doing so, they're building a new recreation center, and they're taking over the ball fields and all that sort of thing, as part from Cabarrus County to incorporate it into the park, along with a lot of boardwalks and a few other things going across over to Highland Creek and a few other things. As part of that, they were going to need an easement down along the property line, and I think that's gonna be--you put it up there for me, I can see that, an easement along the edge of our property line, which encompasses the access road that goes down to the athletic fields behind the school. They also incorporate that, as you can see, into several access points from the park as they do so. Again, Cabarrus County will be the granting entity, as they technically own the property because it has debt still on that piece of property, so they will have to be the one to grant the easement. However, I wanted to bring it to you as your information, so that you could have any questions or have any comments you may have to Cabarrus County prior to them passing it on to the City of Concord. I've got Ms. Sheila Lowry here from Concord. If you have any questions about the park association, she's more than happy to help share those. She's been very patient back here waiting to see this, but if you have any questions, we're here to answer those.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm just gonna open it up for discussion. I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't really have any questions. I think it's great that we're working together with the park system on this, so thank you.
The goal is to make it safe for both vehicle and pedestrian.
Ms. Carpenter?
The only question I have, I mean, I don't think it presents any problem. I just see where we're crossing a couple of our roads. I mean, that's no problem or anything, is it, with the right-of-way?
Actually, the road will be--the right-of-way, and we'll dedicate the road to the City of Concord as part of their park development. So anything past our parking lot, we will not necessarily need to maintain anymore, which is a really good thing, too.
If it's kind of advantage, I'm all for it.
Yes, ma'am.
If they're gonna pay to repair it or pave it, I'm all for it. Okay, and so if we have to pave it, would they pave it, or would we?
Yeah, thank goodness it's still in pretty good shape, but I'm sure it's when they develop the parking--
I'm just seeing, I think it's the circular driveway. You see where I'm talking about?
Out front with the circle?
Out front of that circular driveway where it crosses over.
Yes, we'll still have our interests will still be in and out for our interest, but what we're looking at is that once we pass our parking lot and, I guess, do west for that, we'd be working--
Yeah, the circulars are, we will need to do a traffic impact study to know what we need to do with the traffic, and there's two components to that. First will be non, when it's not busy, and then the second piece will be when it is busy and school is in session, because we wanna make sure that we address stacking, because that's probably the number-one concern for the school, for dismissal, and for dropping off, is how will it stack and how will the park impact? So those circles are indicating the areas where we'll do a traffic impact study.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Looks good. I trust that you guys are handling this appropriately. I do wanna say, just take a minute to say that, you know, I think all of us have been impacted by Jim Ramsor in some way, and definitely gonna miss him, and just sympathy to his family during this time, so thank you.
Mr. Furr?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
So there are roadway improvements that will be done. It's gonna be in the summertime?
There will be a study done in the entrances. The road itself, that's an CDOT road--
All the way through?
So, the CDOT, any improvements outside of the impact areas, it'll be addressed by CDOT, not the city.
So that easement with the road, that's all CDOT?
Though, the easement will be us.
But the road that's underneath that easement is--
That will be for, we would have to maintain it.
They're planning to do any paving or something? Is that what you're--
Yeah, the main purpose is to pave a path. If you've been to Cox Mill, where the road comes down, the goal is to put a path on the side between the new park and the road so people are not walking in the roadway. We can provide them a safe access down, and to provide additional parking for the athletic fields.
In addition to between the two fields, is that what--
There's six fields down there.
The two main fields, is that right, the balls?
We currently are maintaining those fields now.
Okay, just make sure that we're not affecting school as we're doing all that stuff.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Sandage?
So, I appreciate the dedication to this tribute, and I just wanna say rest in paradise to this individual. I didn't know him personally, but I wanna ask a question about how this will affect car rider lines, and I'll tell you where this is coming from. I went to the city's community meeting last week, and there were some very upset people in there talking about the traffic from west that I've mentioned in this meeting several times. So I just wanna make sure we're thinking about how this may or may not affect car rider lines. I know traffic can be brutal.
Yeah, that'll be the stacking for the school.
Okay.
That is, that's the traffic study. Where those circles are at the top is where we'll be doing that study.
Okay, so that is in process?
Yes, well, it will be. I need to get the approval and the blessings to move on, and then, yes, ma'am.
And so how will that be communicated to the public? Like, what's-- Yeah, that part.
Right now, we currently use the parking lot and all of it down to the athletic fields as part of our stacking, which that's the only way to make Cox Mill work. So we'll have to make sure we communicate that once the park is built, we'll still have access to that to be able to push traffic down and around in that parking lot and back up to the school in order to allow that stacking off-site, and then as they do it to additional turn lanes or whatever it might be, to help improve that.
And we're maintaining the fields now. We have a lease with the county, so the fields are the city, and we work with the school system to make sure they have the amount needed to stack in order for drop-off and pickup. And the goal is, when we do the traffic study, to do it during that time, because it's a different ballgame when you get to school in and school out.
Oh, yeah, totally agree. Well, that's good that that's being considered. I appreciate that.
No problem.
We love the word "traffic impact study," right? Yeah, and thank you for being here tonight, and yes, our thoughts and prayers go out to the Jim Ramsor family, the many of us that have worked with him in the past as the city councilman, with the many projects that we've all been a part of, so definitely thoughts and prayers out, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, this will be placed on the consent agenda, I'm assuming all as well?
Yes, and then we'll go on to the county commissioners' agenda next month for them to actually grant the easement.
Perfect. I think that's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to 6.06, amended 4.1 lease agreement, the Roberta Road Middle School. We'll have Mr. Brian Cohn to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki. So, at the request of Cabarrus County, the existing lease agreement that we have in place-- So at the request of Cabarrus County, the existing lease agreement that we have in place for Roberta Road Middle School has been requested on their behalf to have some modifications made to the terms of the lease. On the agenda item, I put the initial 4.1 language on there for you as well as the modified. Because of this modification, the entire lease agreement does need to be approved again by this board as well as the commissioners, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on it.
Okay, I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Walter.
So additionally, you changed the name of the school, you put the direct name of the school on the agreement?
Yes.
Because I signed the last one. But the date's still not changed, we didn't, we don't have a date there at the end date.
So nothing changes on the terms. What the language modifies is that if the county chooses to take the collateral that is Roberta Road Middle School and put it as part of a refinancing package, the terms of that lease then get extended out.
Yeah, I understand that, Brian, I see that, we're adding that, but we're also saying the lease term shall commence from February 27, 2020, and end February something, 2040. What something date?
Twenty years, the leases are 20 years.
So is it February 27th? Would it be February 27th or February 26, 2040, or what?
It's 20 years out from that date that it was set.
The one that you're going to present to me next has a date.
Say that again?
The agreement that you're presenting to us next on the next item has an end date to it.
Yes, on our Brown McCallister.
Yeah, so why doesn't this, if I'm looking at this, I'm going to say, is it February 1st, is it February 29th? Is it, what is it, what is the end date of the term? And it's a blank there, I'm asking, why not put that actual date in there?
Well, how about I look at that a little deeper for you and answer that?
How about we just correct it and for the consent agenda, if we put it on there, because it should just say 27, and that's it, that's it. That's what he's trying to say, so.
Actually, that date will be hard to determine until financing is actually finished, and then it'll be whatever the financing.
So should we on purpose leave it, I mean, I'm, I figured you probably did, but let's just make it clear, so.
That's what it's always been.
Perfect, okay, so we're going to evidently have to leave it like that. Are you okay with that?
I'm saying we're not consistent. If we're showing the next lease, the next lease we're presenting to us, the next agenda item has a specific date as an end date, so that's not consistent.
I think that, I thought they both had dates established.
Right, they do.
Richard at the county establishes those agreements and sends them to this.
Right, and I get it, it's fine, it is fine, but it's?
I don't care what the date is, just put the date in there, some people.
Right, well, I think what they're saying is they can't determine the first one until finance does it, but it tells you that it's good for 20 years. So if we need to make that change, I'm not so sure how we can do that tonight, but just knowing that it's a 20-year, yes, absolutely.
Mr. White, thoughts?
And I can't get the agreement. I think what I will do is let me get the information from Mr. Cornelius. I was talking to him about this, and he's looked into it. I can get that answer back to Mr. Walter and have it addressed on Monday night.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, it's not the biggest deal in the world, it's just consistency.
And with the board's permission, I will speak directly to Mr. Walter since he has the most questions about it, make certain he's satisfied, but I'll bring the final answer back to everybody so everybody knows about it on Monday night.
Yeah, you can email me and Holly, that'd be fine.
No, that's what I'm saying, is there may be a conversation, that's my point is.
Okay, that's fine.
Ms. Furr.
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter. No comments.
Thank you.
So are we good for the consent agenda, the majority of the board? Okay, all right, thank you. You are good, Brian.
Okay.
Okay, we will move to 6.07, the agency and lease agreements, the Arbrown McAllister STEM School. We will keep Mr. Cone.
So these are the same agreements we had in place for Roberta Road Middle School, but these are the new agreements that will be in place for the development of the Arbrown McAllister STEM Elementary School. It is the agency agreements and lease agreements that again have to be approved by both this board and the county commissioners.
Okay, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
No comments or questions.
Ms. Carpenter.
I'm good.
Ms. Blackwell.
No questions.
Mr. Furr.
I'm good.
Mr. Walter.
I'm good, this one has a lease here.
Thank you. Ms. Sandage.
Let's get her done.
All right, consent agenda, this, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 6.08, the Mount Pleasant High School Parking and Drive Replacement, and we will have Mr. John LaGrande to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. Cabarrus County Schools receive a one-time funding for our county for a parking lot and drive replacement at Mount Pleasant High School. Our facilities maintenance department contracted with Ally, Williams, Carmen and King Incorporated to design bid and oversee the parking lot and drive replacement as required by the state statute as a third-party consultant. Bid response was adequate to complete replacement and repairs as needed. The lowest responsible bidder was Farabee Corporation. Farabee was one of the five bidders who responded. FMD recommends for board approval to award contract for the Mount Pleasant High School parking lot and drive replacement to Farabee Corporation.
Okay, we will begin discussion. Ms. Sandage, comments or questions?
This is going to make it safer there. I'm guessing that's why we're doing it, right?
Yes, this driveway is long overdue for repair and repave.
I would never stop that. I'm good.
Mr. Walter.
Okay, explain to me on this bid addendum number one, or number two, where it says, I'm sorry, it's a bid, it's addendum number one, revision number two, and it says base price for asphalt binder for the plant is $667 per ton. How many tons is that, and what kind of an expense additional amount is that?
I don't have that information with me tonight, I'll be happy to provide that to you.
Yeah, I just want to see what the difference is, obviously adds to the prices, you know, whatever the budget is and.
The lower bidder by quite some amount, but does that change, how much does that change?
The reason that price is put into the bid is to show that right now it presents index for asphalt as that price. Should they buy asphalt and that index goes up, our price will go up. That just sets the baseline for what the price index was when you buy asphalt at the time of bid. Basically what it does, if you don't do that, they won't bid it because they're not going to bid it and say, I've got to buy asphalt six months from now, and all of a sudden that price is $700 a ton, they're not going to take the hit. So you have to, NC DOT has that in every single contract they have based on asphalt index.
So does it change significantly the contract price, or is it?
It may change, it won't change it that much. I don't think we will see a major, you know, $50 a ton go up, it probably may go up four or $5 a ton if that's the case, then it may increase.
So that's within the contingency amount?
It should be within that contingency.
Okay, that's good enough for me, thank you.
Mr. Furr. Ms. Sandage, sure.
We already have the funding for this. Did I hear that when you said it earlier?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Furr.
I think we've been talking about doing this since 2008, so this is long overdue. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
Agreed, long overdue. Happy to see it get done, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
Let me make sure I understand this. The commissioners basically gave us money to say, they gave us this $1.1 million and said, you can do Mount Pleasant driveway, I mean, you could do this, a parking lot and driveway, basically was that, and you went out and did bids on it. Is that correct?
That's correct. We were provided the funding from the county, we went out and got bids, and five bidders responded, and Farabee Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood that we weren't taking it out of fund balance, we weren't doing that, we went out and got the bids, and they were the lowest bidder, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't taking it from somewhere else, so, okay, I'm good to go, anyway.
Ms. Adcock.
No questions or comments.
One question, do we need a definitive number or a not to exceed on that because of the timing?
I don't know, Tim, do you know on that one?
I'm not sure with the timing, should we recognize a definitive number or a not to exceed?
The contract is built with a contingency amount that allows us to have that flexibility.
Perfect answer, thank you very much. All right, assuming consent agenda for all. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, moving to 6.09, instructure resources, and we'll have Dr. Kelly Withers to the podium.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to ask Ms. Sarah Reeves to join me as well for this presentation, in case you have questions specific to our historical context that I would not have the answers to. But we're bringing you the contract tonight for our instructure resources. These are our benchmark assessments, this is, we had the same presentation last year for these assessments. If you look at, this is our assessment systems and how we use those, and Ms. Reeves is going to explain that to you.
Absolutely. So one of the things that's really important to us is to make sure that we provide personalized pathways for all of our students, and so this really allows us to do this in a very, I would say, specific and unique way. So throughout the course of the year, we have the opportunity, obviously, our teachers are working with our students every day with checks for understanding, specifically around the standards and academic vocabulary, and so at the end of every quarter, really what they're looking at is how are they comparing in terms of projected proficiency based on whatever content area that they are specifically teaching. So this allows our teachers to not only have a laser-like focus on the individual student needs, but also it helps us to determine proficiency and growth through our model. And so this is what we're really talking to you about today specifically as it relates to our TE21 benchmark assessments. Additionally, it allows us to go back and tweak where we have curriculum growth opportunities. So if there are specific standards in which we need to be able to better support our scholars, we can do so through this preliminary data prior to the end of the year.
Thank you. So our benchmark history, again, 2017, we used, and prior to that, discovery ed benchmark assessments. We made a change in 2017 to the case and Mastery Connect assessments, and now 2020 through 2022, we've used North Carolina check-ins plus the same case and Mastery Connect assessments. So we are asking, our recommendation is that we renew this contract for our benchmarks as Ms. Reeves explained, to measure the progress on our EOG and EOC content or our North Carolina standards. In addition, this includes the item banks and the Mastery Connect, which are teacher tools to use for those in-the-moment checks, as she explained. That contract is all-inclusive of all of those. You'll see that the contract is called instructure, that is the parent company that owns all of these pieces and parts, the benchmark and Mastery Connect. And so in addition to this presentation and your agenda, you also have the contract for your review totaling $349,043.86.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments or any questions about it other than just thank you for your dedication to our students and always providing a place for our teachers to be able to evaluate their progress.
Ms. Carpenter.
I have to ditto that, and this is something that all the teachers are familiar with, something they've used.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not duplicating services, and it's something that we can assess the student, and one of the, and I didn't see it mentioned or anything, Babel or something like that, that has nothing to do with that.
No, ma'am, that's a different, completely different.
Okay, because I had kind of reviewed that, and I'm not, I can tell you right now, I'm not crazy about it, okay? So never mind.
This is a continuation of a current resource, so our teachers are already familiar with it and using it, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Blackwell.
No questions, just thank you for keeping this going because I know that it is a big help for our teachers and administrators, so thank you.
Mr. Furr. Mr. Walter.
It's within budget and the price is the same, or is it?
The price is actually lower. Last year it was $376,598.15, so the cost has gone down.
That's good news. And then the second part was, how do we measure this assessment? Is it helping us match up with the actual EOGs and stuff that they take? Is it?
Yes, go ahead. Absolutely. So if you remember historically, last year, we came to you with the same request, and it was because we took a year off and leveraged the NC check-ins, and just candidly, the feedback that we got from all of our staff was that it just didn't provide the level of accuracy that TE21 did. In the last study that we did prior, we were within 98% predictability. So yes, to answer your question, it is a very good tool to help us maybe sure that our students are meeting their growth targets.
Great, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Ms. Sandage.
So I was going to also ask about the reviews from educators in utilizing this, and it seems that they were great reviews. Any percentages as to the reviews, like did we have 100% of our educators that like using this and?
Yes, so we actually used a couple of different committees, so we didn't actually poll every single teacher specifically, and we also leveraged our school administrators to provide feedback, and overwhelmingly, the feedback that we got from our teachers was just, it was very difficult with the NC check-ins because we didn't necessarily get to dictate the pacing of the standard. So sometimes questions came too soon and teachers hadn't taught the content yet, or it wasn't spiraled enough. So now we actually have the ability to take the feedback from our educators on the assessments, and if it doesn't meet their needs, we can go back and tweak it before the next round, which is a really beautiful thing to be able to do.
Okay, and can you go back to the slide that shows what we did previously and, okay, so where we've added to the eight, wait a minute, I'm sorry, North Carolina check-ins, is this because we've identified the need for this, for something? And can you help me close the gap of what that need is and what this will address as it relates to that need? I hope that made sense. It did?
Sure, you're asking why we're doing the check-ins plus these other tools as well, exactly. So realistically, we are leveraging the check-ins in cases that right now there wasn't a need for anything else, so we are taking the place, we are using TE21 in place of the check-ins, if that makes sense.
I'll ask a question later so that I make sure I understand what you're saying, but what is TE again?
TE21 is part of the case benchmarks, I'm sorry, there's so many educational acronyms.
Okay.
So that is, the TE21 benchmarks is the case benchmarks that occur three times a year, and then the Mastery Connect is the item bank that teachers are able to go into to create their own classroom-level assessments.
Gotcha. And see, my question stems around this conversation about learning gaps and how this will help teachers based off of what we've identified previously, and that's what I'm trying to connect, and am I connecting that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. You know, sometimes you just have to refresh us. There's a lot of new stuff going on. Exactly. All right, board members, consent, I'm assuming for all? Okay, thank you for the presentation. Next, we will have 6.10, budget amendments, and we'll have Mrs. Carol Herndon to the podium.
Good evening, Board. Awesome. Okay, I'm happy to bring to you our second budget amendment for 2021, 2022. There aren't a lot of changes to report from budget amendment number one, and we didn't expect there to be any significant changes at this time of the school year. A couple of things I did want to point out to you, what we're looking at now are budget amendments for our Fund I state monies that come to us, and you'll notice in the center of the page, we did receive the final allotment, the $431,432 and $100,000 for transportation for our Read to Achieve summer camp. We get that in two separate allotments, and this is the second of the two allotments, and so we were grateful to receive that to help to work to continue to close our learning gaps over the summer. Likewise, a couple down from that, you'll see $418,545, that is the allotment to our district for 085, the bucket of money that is for our summer programs that relate to, again, solving learning loss and keeping our children remediated and ready for the next school year. That PRC 85 this year is specifically for stipends for qualified teachers that agree to instruct across the summer months and also to help fund the stipends that we are paying to our certified staff for the state mandated letters training over the next couple of years. We will move on to local. There are not really any significant new funding appropriations from the county. These are just reclassifications between budget codes, if you will. It isn't unusual that we have plans to expend monies in contracted services, but due to circumstances, we make a transfer to spend those monies out of supplies instead. A great example of that is, as you all know, we are facing significant increases in fuel costs this year, particularly in the calendar year 2022. And so while we may have budgeted more money in supplies or contracted services, we're having to transfer that to our fuel accounts to support the significant increases in fuel costs. So no new funding there, just some transfers between our different budget buckets. From a federal funding perspective, we did receive a large grant. You'll see that in the middle of the page. We expected to receive it, and it totals $344,576. We applied for it and received it as expected, and really no other items to report from a federal fund perspective. In our capital outlay budget, we did receive advanced funding from our county of $2.4 million to support the work around mobile units for the upcoming school year 2022, 2023. Our county has been super gracious to advance that funding to us so that we can get started on moving the mobiles to where they need to be and renovating the mobiles so that they are ready for our students when they come on day one of the next school year. And it takes about from now until then to do that. We don't want our students showing up without a place to learn, and so we were grateful to receive that advanced appropriation in the total amount of $2.4 million in our capital budget. And we also, normally our state does not provide grant opportunities related to athletics, but in this unusual time, they did offer to all LEAs an athletic grant, and we applied for it and received it in the amount of $176,000. And you heard that discussed previously when we were talking about the turf installations at two of our schools. We're gonna use this money to support that work as well. And then with regard to school nutrition, we have just updated our school nutrition budget to reflect our current projections for our school nutrition revenues for the year. Again, this is a very normal budget amendment and update as we learn more about different funding, not only from our point-of-sale transactions as it relates to school nutrition, but different grants that we receive from the federal government USDA normal activity. From a SMP account, you have heard and we've mentioned that we were really thrilled to be the benefactor of the stabilization, childcare stabilization grant, and we received an appropriation related to that of just under $1.1 million, and that's included in this budget amendment. Other than that, there are not any significant new activity in our fund date other revenue accounts. You can see the smaller grants and donations that were received during this period, and so I present to you budget amendment number two for 2021, 2022, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and I will begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments or questions.
Ms. Carpenter.
Just had two, and they're probably very simple. One of them was on the local funds. What was it actually for the Kids Plus? It was, it says computer software repair, maintenance. It said reclassified funds to abnormal spent this year and utilize those funds for FMD expenses. What was that?
Yes, ma'am.
It was like $109,640.
Yes, ma'am. We, when we prepared the budget for this school year, we had established a local provision to support Kids Plus of $100,000. But because they received the grant I just referenced, they did not need that $100,000 in local provision that we had summarized in the initial budget resolution. And so we redirected it to support the escalating costs that we've seen in our facilities and maintenance department because of inflation.
So we gave it back to, hey, good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I know they needed it. The other thing was, and again, this was just a, and I think what it was, was maybe to get the, the, what we get for, wait a minute, let me look down here. I had it pulled up. It said other, and I think what it is, is the revenue that we maybe get. It's $28,906, and it says other, other tax, other, it said Indian gamble, Indian gambling, and I just wondered if it was.
Oh, Indian gaming?
Indian.
Yes, that's a normal state allotment that we receive this time of the year, each year.
If, for the revenue that we get from that, so that's what that was for. I figured it was, okay, so that was the revenue we're getting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I figured those were two simple things. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
That's it. Ms. Blackwell.
So two words I think that we all love, our grants and donations. So thank you, because I don't know that people understand how hard that we work on getting these grants and donations for our school system. So thank you very much and your team for working on getting this money for our students.
You're welcome. And I will say that our district at large, and all of my colleagues and all of the departments here at the Ed Center, as well at the school level, are super aggressive in pursuing grant and donation opportunities. And we have a very kind and philanthropic community that steps up to the plate there. So I can't think of an opportunity that we have not gone after since I've been here.
And we are grateful for that, so thank you.
Mr. Fur. Mr. Walter.
I think you did a great job explaining all these changes, so thank you.
Ms. Sandage.
No questions.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda all? Thank you. Okay, we will move to 7.01, the Dell Chromebook Purchase, and we'll have Mr. Ben Allred to the podium.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you, Ms. Grimsley, for allowing me to present something on action during our work session, and I'll explain to the board while we're doing that. So we receive in Cabarrus County Schools, as does every district across the United States, E-Rate funding. There's two forms of E-Rate funding. There's Category 1 funding, which provides discounts for our internet, and there's Category 2 funding, which provides us stuff, so things, switches, routers, things that help provide us the internet and get it in our schools. We're on a five-year cycle with our Category 2 funding, 2021 to 2025. It's a four to $5 million appropriation for Cabarrus County Schools. Global supply chain issues meant that the order we placed in September last year still isn't here. We got special dispensation from North Carolina E-Rate to buy something else with that funds in exchange for paying for those switches when they come in sometime in the summer or fall, so we don't lose the money. The reason for the action request tonight is the sooner we can place that order, i.e. tomorrow, if you approve it, we'll be able to get those in prior to our June 30 deadline. So you can see that the original ask was $424,000 for the Aruba switches to the E-Rate funds. We were able to put in a quote for $423,381.73, which replaces 1,177 Chromebooks, which sounds like a whole lot, but it's about 3.4% of our total student devices, so it's actually kind of a drop in the bucket. And I'll answer any questions you have, but that's the ask for the evening. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage.
So if we don't approve this tonight, can you, just in layman's term, explain to me what happens?
We would lose the funding, the $423,000 for those switches.
But we get it back somewhere. I'm trying to understand, that's all.
No, we would not get that money back. So in order to take advantage of those funds, DPI has recommended we need to move to purchase something we can get in stock, which Chromebooks we can. We have a two-to-three week turnaround, so if we place an order tomorrow, we can have those before June hits. But if we do not receive those switches, we'd have to cancel that order, and we'd lose that funding.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand, we ordered something last year.
Correct.
And it didn't come.
Correct.
Did we pay for that already? I guess I'm trying to make sure that.
No, we have not paid for it.
Okay, I'm good now. Thank you.
We're just doing a little shell game and moving things around to stay within guidelines.
I thought we was doubling some money somewhere, so thank you.
No, we haven't paid for anything we didn't receive.
Mr. Walter.
You're really thinking a week's gonna make that big of a difference?
Pardon me?
You're thinking a week is gonna make that big of a difference?
Say again, I don't understand.
Approving it tonight versus next, typically we present it and we approve it next week?
I do believe a week will make a difference.
Mr. Fur. Ms. Blackwell.
No questions.
I agree, with delivery of things, a week can make a difference.
Carol says it really makes a difference.
You should do construction for a living. Ms. Adcock?
No comments.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, may I have a motion that the Dell Chromebook Purchase not to exceed? And before I do that, Ben, is that number correct as far as a not to exceed?
Correct.
Okay, just making double sure.
It's an exact amount.
Okay, all right. Not to exceed $432,381.73 be approved as presented.
Settle move. I'll second that.
Okay, I'll take Ms. Sandage on the motion and Ms. Carpenter on the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Okay, and before we sign off for the evening, because that does conclude our business, we want to thank the SROs for being with us here tonight and always supporting our board meetings. We would like to say Happy Mother's Day out there to all that will take place on Sunday, and I believe this is Teacher Appreciation Week today, the 2nd through the 6th, so we would like to say thank you to all our teachers for all you do in our system and hope you have a great week. And with that, I will.
Yesterday was National Principals, School Principals' Day.
Would you like to say that again?
Yesterday was National School Principals' Day. I think the board would certainly like to express our appreciation for our wonderful principals that we have here in this district.
Thank you for that statement, absolutely. And with that, any other comments, board members? Nothing? Okay. We will say good night to our viewing audience, and we will see you Monday, May the 9th, for our normal business meeting. Good night. I actually need a motion to go into closed session, so give me one second. May I have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318183 and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318186.
Settle move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now in closed session. Good night.